To the townspeople of Norwood and town meeting members. This started out as a fairly easy year to balance our budget. We had revenue, thanks to override, and we had, the economy was great. We received an increase in state aid, and we had an agreement limiting spending with the general government and the school departments. The Board of Selectmen, Finance Commission, and the school committee, at the request of the commission, updated our financial policies. We were looking down the road at a better credit rating that will save us money when we need to borrow. The town started to work on the proposal to replace the Coakley Middle School. So, a great year. The departments within the town had agreed on a balanced budget based on a conservative revenue estimate of roughly 90% of our previous year's departmental receipts, and we received an exceptional amount of state aid. Then, early March, we were assaulted by the virus. Our FY 2020 budget was impacted. We needed to clean buildings, provide PPEs, we needed to help people, move the fire department, rent extra vehicles. We were allowed to spend over our budget for the emergency. Added to this, our revenues from meals tax and hotel stays are down. Payments on real estate and property taxes have been delayed. Our forecast for 2021 revenue was based on a very healthy economy. Here are some of our questions. Will the economy grow back where it was in just a few months? What will happen in FY 2022, in FY 2023? We've been told that there will be state and federal aid, but how much and when? And in the past, federal government and FEMA payments have been rather slow to arrive. Took us 10 years in an override to recover from the last recession. We have adequate reserves, but those reserves need to be used frugally. At this point in time, we had more questions than answers. Will the schools be open? And if they are open, what will it take to open them? We have old schools with small rooms. Do we need double sessions? Does that mean we need more buses? How many more PPEs for staff do we need? How long do we need to keep our fire department separated? Do we need to add additional rental vehicles to keep our employees at a safe distance? Are we able to sustain our employees working from home? Well, we need to reduce staff. We, the Finance Commission, voted on this budget on May 14th. The budget as it is presented to you in the book was balanced, based on the best projections of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Commission, and the school committee before COVID-19. The Finance Commission on May 19th rescinded our previous vote. We were not comfortable with the plan. Everyone seemed to be in agreement that the future was not predictable. There were suggestions that town meeting could adjust the budget at the annual town meeting and at future specials. The Finance Commission felt that further discussion was needed and also planning. A committee of two finance commissioners, myself and Alan Slater, worked with the school department and the general government to create a memorandum or a plan. You will see that plan in your budget book. The plan agrees to lower revenue expectations and adjust spending in the early months of FY 2021. Delay capital spending, delay adding extra money to our override and pension accounts. At town meeting, there will be motions presented to you that will enable us to fulfill our plan. For more information, please see the insert after the general manager's letter in your book. We urge the school committee and the selectmen to be frugal, because our future is truly unknown, and that pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, it is but a fairy tale. Town meeting representatives, please go through your budget books and listen to or watch the presentation of the boards. Send us your questions, and last but not least, be a great citizen and attend and participate in town meeting. The Finance Commission wants to take this opportunity to let you know we are thinking of all of you. So many, young and old, in our town have worked together, as always, to help friends, neighbors, and others in need during this emergency. Your smiles as you walked out by, you picked up or dropped off food, you called a neighbor, you contributed financially. Thank you, all. If you are a town employee, we appreciate your hard work and get it done attitude. We, the Finance Commission, thank you all, and send our best wishes to survivors and our condolences to those families who have lost loved ones. Thank you. Now, we will continue this with some slides, so that I can go over some of the important budget information. This is an overview of the budget. The total budget comes in at $205,782,459. That's 2.04 percentage increase. General government's total expenses were up 3.5%. That's consistent with the override pledge. School department budget is consistent with the override pledge also. Now, if you remember, the override pledge was 3.5% increases each year. Then, there was another section in the override pledge that addressed the school department needing extra funds for mandated programs and English language learners and special ed. Now, the school department did allocate another $570,000 that came to us in an extra income or revenue from the state. And so, that's called the Student Opportunities Act, and we're using $570,000 for the schools and their core needs. The facilities department is now officially a part of our Norwood budget. Pension catch-up was planned of $500,000 above and beyond the regular amount that the state demands that we put in. We were going to contribute, OPEB contributions, $250,000. And Ms. Mizuko has been, over the last couple of years, separating our utility funds into enterprise funds. So, here we are. This is the compliance with the override pledge. General override will not be sought, another general override would not be sought, and we currently do not want another override. Budget capped at 3.5%. Both the school department and the general government reached that 3.5%. No more than seven benefited positions excluding ELL and sped in the town budget. Norwood Public Schools has hired five people, and general government has hired two. Healthcare costs remain at 5%. The paving program that was in the override, the $250,000, that is presently in the budget and will stay there. There were, all of the boards met at different times and used the memorandum when we met, and there was no indication that further changes should be made to the memorandum. Our OPEB contributions will not decrease, and we are currently utilizing all of our revenue before we look at taxation. So, we've met the override pledge. Now, this slide shows the general government's budget, and down at the very bottom, there's the total budget. This also includes the 52 million, the grand total includes the 52 million for the school department. Now, a couple of things to note here. Only two contracts have been concluded and settled, and the water and sewer costs are now being segregated and moved to the enterprise fund accounting. So, that's it on that. This is the school department budget, broken down by each school district. The teacher's contract has not been settled. The budget is 3.5%, excluding the mandatory sped and ELL costs. We continue to have increases in our sped and ELL costs. It's just what happens, and there is nothing that can be done about it. As far as the Finance Commission is concerned, the school has done its due diligence and trying to control those costs. And the override investments are showing progress. We are moving forward. So, here are the shared costs, and there's a couple of things that might catch your eye while you're looking at it. First is the new facilities department is $372,939. And that is not its entire budget. The school is paying for part of the budget, as is the general government. State assessments and charges are new to this budget, or last year, I guess, new to this budget anyway, because the state has mandated that we put those charges in that. And that would be like the MBTA assessments. Regional schools, our costs have gone up there, because Blue Hills Regional has that new renovation. We are paying for that, plus our number of students has gone back up again. And last but not least, the reserve fund, which is what the Finance Commission uses if we need to make payments on something before or when it's more difficult to have a special, we will use the reserve fund to get something paid. So, this slide shows you the changes that we made in the budget, or want to make in the budget, for when we consider the impact of COVID-19. We want to pause the additional catch-up for our retirement fund. We were going to add an extra $500,000. At this point, we would ask that we don't add that $500,000. That will be in a motion, and we will then take it up in the fall, and if we have the revenue, we will add it then. The same thing with money into the stabilization fund. I'm not a fan of not funding our stabilization fund, but I think at this point, it is something that we should do, just postpone it until the fall to make sure that our revenues are there. At this time, we are not sure of the amount of revenue that we will be getting from the state government. The next one is pause contributions to the override stabilization fund. In the original memorandum, we said that we would add $250,000 a year to the override fund. This year, we were preparing to put in $700,000, and instead, we'll make no contributions to this until, hopefully, in the fall. Utilize free cash. We are going to utilize $1,082,928 as a stopgap to balance the budget. We're going to use free cash to balance the budget, which is something that we don't really want to do and had decided not to do in our original budget. But we feel that this is the best course of action at this time. The last slide is compliance with financial policies. Over the past year, the Finance Commission, along with the selectmen and the school department, reviewed our financial policies, and we are now compliant in 28 of 31 categories for our overall excellent rating of 90%. Three areas that need improvement under our financial policies is the stabilization fund balance, borrowing versus using cash for capital, and recurring capital items that should be moved to operating budgets. All three of those things, we are working on very diligently, and had not been for the COVID-19, we would have been right there at 100% or pretty close to it. I think that it is a great thing that we are able to do this, not have layoffs, as other communities have. So, I think that shows that we have a strong financial standing. I asked the town meeting members to look at pages 5 to 9 in the introduction section of your budget book. I think it's called Info. And on pages 5 to 9, there is an in-depth explanation of what we are going to do at town meeting and the motions that we will be making to change from the original budget as voted on on May 14th by the Finance Commission. We are changing it to the budget that was created and then voted on by the Finance Commission on May 19th. That's where you will find all of the information that you need to make a good decision in your vote. Again, it's page, info, pages 5 to 9. I want to thank everyone for participating, and I hope to see you all at town meeting. Thank you very much.
Hello. I am Dr. Thompson. I am the superintendent of schools here in Norwood, and with me is...
I'm Maev Bodenhoffer. I'm the vice chair of the Norwood School Committee and the chair of the townwide budget balancing committee.
And we are with you today to give a presentation on the FY 21 school budget. So, in this presentation, we're going to go over some highlights from this past year, the impact of the override, a budget overview, and the things that are driving our budget, review of the override pledge and how we have worked to meet the override pledge, the Student Opportunities Act and what that means for our fiscal planning in this next coming year, and also highlight the school committee's work on the budget process. So, I'm going to start, and we'll start with the highlights of the year. So, want to bring up a couple of things. First, we're very proud to remind everyone that the Prescott Elementary School was named a National Blue Ribbon School this year. That is a huge accomplishment. Our principal of the middle school, Dr. Frazek, was named a finalist for the Middle School Principal of the Year. We successfully implemented our district strategic plan, and we did a lot of improvement in curriculum and instruction, thanks to the override. Looking at kindergarten in specific, the Willett School served more than 270 kindergarteners this year. Our classes have been added to the kindergarten or returned to the kindergarten, which is important for fine motor development and visual processing at that level. We increased our English language learning, teaching, and materials for students at an age when the language is learned quickly. In grades 1 through 5, the elementary schools avoided significant overcrowding with the Willett remaining open and addition of modular classroom at the Prescott School. Full-time adjustment counselors were added at each elementary school to support students and teachers. Literacy and writing coach was hired, and that mirrors our math coach in the district at the elementary level. New English Language Arts curriculum was purchased this year. K through 5 has been piloted, and we're ready to roll it out for the fall of 2020. We used an assessment software known as Renaissance to allow for individual assessment of students and personalized instruction. At the middle school, each grade of the Coakley Middle School was taught by full teams of teachers, allowing for reasonable class sizes. Project Lead the Way, which is a project-based engineering and science program, was instituted at CMS. We're looking to expand it next year. Renaissance software, again, was piloted last year mainly at the middle school and used throughout the school. Additional adjustment counselor was hired to offer support for social-emotional needs of students, and this, as you know, if you've been watching, has been an increased need that we've seen over the last few years. Late bus was still made available for students to meet with teachers after school and participate in after-school clubs and activities. In 9 through 12, we were able to kick off our Innovations Pathways program, and we have an expansion, a plan for the future. We are in the process of going through that application process. AP classes were available for students who qualified for them, so the first time since I have been here, I have not had to deal with parents whose children were shut out of an opportunity to take an AP class. Again, the Renaissance software was used with MCAS preparation, especially for those students at the high school who had not met, were not on track based on their eighth-grade MCAS scores. Our Fine Arts Program continued. We did not have to cut back on that. We had Shrek the Musical, the marching band and jazz band had award-winning seasons once again. Our athletics programs continued. We did not need to cut any of those. Field hockey, boys' and girls' ice hockey, girls' basketball, all competed in the state tournament, and of course, very important, the football team beat Deta. District-wide, we had an increased investment in professional development for all of our staff. We focused on interventions to assist students in need, ultimately decreasing referrals for special education, and additional curriculum materials for our English language learners were purchased, and we conducted PD, an exploration of project-based learning. I turn it over to Ms. Bodenhoffer.
So, I'd like to just give you an overview of the entire budget. The FY 21 budget request is for $52.7 million. This list here shows the major categories as described by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, you'll notice that the bulk of the money is spent in instructional services. Almost $38 million of our budget is spent there. That includes teacher salaries, paraprofessional salaries, all of the textbooks and supplies that are used for directly teaching our students. The other categories, you'll notice, the 4,000 is the operation of maintenance and maintenance of plant. That's almost $5.5 million. That includes all of our utilities to run our buildings and all of our custodians and basic maintenance. The 5,000 category shows total benefits and fixed charges. That's only $44,000 in our budget, and that's because most of our benefits for our faculty and staff are actually part of the town's shared budget. And the last one I want to call to your attention is the 9,000 series, which are programs with other school districts. This is mostly out-of-district placements for certain special education students, and that's over $4 million. So, I want to call out a few things about your town meeting books, because it looks a little bit different than we've done in the past for the school budget. With the conversion to Munis, the new accounting software that we purchased last year, the numbers are presented in new ways. So, we created a brand-new chart of accounts, which aligns with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's reporting requirements. So, now, in the budget book, if you look on page 3B-3, you'll see that the budgets are presented by school. And I do want to call to your attention that because of the reorganization with the new chart of accounts, oftentimes, the FY 19 and earlier numbers can't be directly compared to the FY 21. And in fact, even FY 20, because that was our first year in the new system, there was a little bit of movement there. I think that going forward, starting with FY 22 to FY 21, we'll be able to make comparisons again. So, what are the big budget drivers for the schools for FY 21? We did have to add two elementary teachers due to class sizes. We have had significant increases in our budget because of special education mandates, also English language learners and the mandates for their education, and out-of-district tuitions have also been a significant driver. So, Dr. Thompson's going to explain a little bit more about each of those things.
Yes. So, looking at, you know, class sizes at an elementary school, it was determined that we needed to add two elementary schools, two elementary teachers, one at the Cleveland and the other one at the Oldham. Actually, we had to bring in that Oldham teacher mid-year because of a significant increase in our fourth grade, that will be in fifth grade next year. Special education mandates, we have seen an increase in students coming into the district needing substantially separate placements. Those are our programs dealing with some of our neediest students in district. And also, an increase in students, including several move-ins who are out of district, and three of those out-of-district tuitions were for residential programs, and those run more than $250,000 a year. So, looking at the sped mandates, we need to add 2.6 special education teachers. Those are in our substantially separate programs, and the reason for that is that the numbers are increasing and the programs, the kids are aging up into another program. We need to build those programs and expand to serve their needs. The only other solution would be to send them out of district, which is not good for them, and also increase costs. Board-certified behavior analyst, also known as a BCBA, we need to add this position to meet the social-emotional needs with our students, especially those students with autism. We're seeing a drastic increase with autistic students, and they need this sort of therapy provided to them and support to the classrooms. Speech-language pathologists, again, this is an early education piece for the most part, but again, if we're not working on speech and language early on, it will impact their learning going forward. Mental health intervention, this is an area we, hopefully, we'll talk more about the Student Opportunities Act Plan or the SOA Plan a little bit, but mental health is becoming a larger and larger issue, especially, it's kind of maximizing at the high school, where we're having kids leaving for placements based on mental health, and we need to do something to bolster our services, make sure we're being, not only meeting those kids' needs, but also intersecting, so we're not having kids, you know, with mental health issues in our schools. The 7.2 paraprofessionals, again, when we have certain ratios that we actually have to follow, and those are mandated by the state, so if you're expanding programs and programs are getting bigger, we need to add the support to make sure we're within the special education mandates. Sped transportation, again, that increase without a district piece, and even in district to a small extent, we've had to increase our busing for our special education students, and that's what that is. That $50,000 is to plan ahead for that. The good news is the state, hopefully, is going to be looking at increasing reimbursement for transportation through Circuit Breaker, which has not been the case before, so that is a new thing. So, that totals to $537,483. Looking at our ELL population, and you've heard us speak to this for the last three years, it is constantly increasing. And to illustrate that, if we go back, and the October 1 poll of students enrolled in the schools is important, because that's where a lot of our funding goes, so it comes from, from the state. So, if we look back at October in 2018, two years ago, we had 340 students that qualified as English language learners. This past October, we had 436. So, in one year, we saw a 28% increase. As of February 2020, that was 446. That's a 31% increase over that October 1 of 18. I also want to note the kindergarten, 46% of our kindergarteners are speaking a second language other than English in their home. So, this is an increased need. It is constantly growing in the town and one that we have mandates that we have to meet. So, to address these, we are going to add one, look to add one position in the budget. We need to have someone that is coordinating this program. We are supposed to have that at about 450. We are going to be over that very quickly. So, in preparation, we're looking at, this actually will add up to 1.0. 0.6 of that position will be teaching, 0.4 of it will be coordinating, so that is a $71,835 total in that area. So, out-of-district tuitions, and we're going back to this past year. You can see this past year, the, our total amount of out-of-district tuitions was $5,523,926. We used $2,100,000 of Circuit Breaker money, and Circuit Breaker money is that money we get from the previous year's enrollment in special education to help defer costs. There is a formula for that. Sometimes it fluctuates between 75% down to 71, 72%. So, the net budget, when you subtract Circuit Breaker, was $3,423,926. So, next year, looking at the out-of-district budget, and this is where you can see the drastic increase, we are looking at $7,128,545,000 in out-of-district tuitions. That's a 29% increase in one year. That is a tremendous, you know, very unusual increase, one time, once in 15 years sort of thing. I have yet to see that in my 30-year experience in education, but that is a huge increase, 29%. We are going to apply more Circuit Breaker towards that next year, $2,755,000, but even with that, we're still looking at a net budget of $4,373,545, which is still a 28% increase in that line item. So, I'll talk a little bit about the Student Opportunities Act. The good news for Norwood is that the state has finally revised the funding formula that came about in 1993 with the Ed Reform Act. A lot has changed since 1993, including healthcare costs, out-of-district tuitions, and things along that line, and there is a formula, so they've revised that formula. And there is a formula, so they revised that formula. So because of that, we are going to get 1.5, almost $1.6 million increase in Chapter 70 or this funding formula from the state. Now with that comes a little caveat. We're going to give you more money, but we want to see you spend it to improve one of your subgroups. So in looking at this and studying this with the administrative team, we determined that special ed would be the place to look at. Part of that is because we have over 20% of our students right now in special ed, which is a very high number. But also because it also crosses racial and economic lines as well. So we'll be able to hit other groups by targeting special ed. So that's why we decided to go with special ed. The state is expecting us to spend $575,000 of that $1.5 million. And we have to design a plan for it. So we have designed that plan. The school committee has voted in that plan. It has multiple tiers to it. And if you look back, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through that, but it has to be a two-year plan. We have to be able to measure and show progress with the subgroup of special education. So looking at our total request for FY '21, and again, the budget drivers are driving a lot of this, $52,736,691. And you can look there for FY '21. Last year, $49,415,540. So I'll turn it back over to Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Thank you. So I wanted to just call out a few other things that you may see in the detail in your town meeting books. So one thing I'd like to let everyone know is that the school committee is currently in negotiations with several unions for FY '21. And so we have included money in our budget to cover salary increases that we expect to happen. And so if you look at page 3C-61 of your town meeting book, you'll see a line for labor relations. And that is that contingency that we have for those salary increases, not just for one union, across all of the unions and I believe some of the administration that we are negotiating with.
Yep.
So, but the kind of quirky thing about that is that that labor relations line rolls up into the legal settlements category. And I just want to make it clear to everyone that that is not a court-ordered settlement. We are not facing an enormous lawsuit. That is our collective bargaining reserve. I also want to point out that although we are looking at, you know, an appropriation from the town of $52.7 million, we make use of other revenue sources as much as we can. We use several grant awards. Many of them are federal entitlement programs, but there's other grants as well. And so if you look at the FY '20 budget, we had over $1.8 million in grants that were supplementing the town appropriation for our schools. We also collect bus fees. In FY '21, we expect to have $400,000 in bus fees, $100,000 for athletic fees for high school students who are participating in sports, and $30,000 for fine arts fees for high school students who are participating in fine arts programs. So I'm sure that all town meeting members will remember that last year, when we were talking about the override, the school committee agreed to and approved a pledge to the voters about how the budget would increase from year to year. And this was approved also by the Finance Commission and the Board of Selectmen. We all collectively agreed to a 3.5% cap on spending increases with certain exceptions. So I want to point out that the main part of our school budget for FY '21 is within that 3.5% increase. But there, we did see exceptions due to special education, English language learners, and related to the Student Opportunity Act. So the parts that are included in the 3.5% cap, all of our regular requests, including the two new elementary teachers, those are paid within that 3.5% increase. Our budget still includes support for the one-to-one technology initiative for grades six to 12, where we provide a Chromebook for every student. You may remember that town meeting a few years ago approved a capital expense to help us kick that program off. But then we agreed that we would make sure there was money in our budget every year to keep refreshing that program because Chromebooks don't last forever. The other thing that's still included in our budget is the next phase of the curriculum refresh. We had talked during the override about how we wanted to spend about $300,000 a year refreshing different areas of the curriculum. The first one we looked at was the Elementary English Language Arts curriculum. But we now have money to continue on that cycle for other curricula needs. And our snow and ice budget, which we also recognized needed to be increased, it remains at exactly the same number it was at for FY '20, which was $246,000. And fortunately, we didn't have to use all that money in FY '20, but we don't know that we'll get so lucky in FY '21. So I did want to talk about the exceptions to that 3.5% cap. If you look at item number six of the pledge, it specifically calls out conditions where there are unfunded mandates and/or extraordinary or unforeseen events. So the mandates that we've seen this year are the increase in the special education needs, both in district and the out-of-district tuitions, and the increase in the number of the English language learners. And as Dr. Thompson mentioned, some of those out-of-district tuitions are partly due to students who moved into Norwood already having a placement. The other thing that's called out in the 3.5%, one of the exceptions to the 3.5% is if there's a substantial change to state funding. So the Student Opportunity Act certainly qualifies as a substantial change to state funding. This has been discussed with the Finance Commission, with the Townwide Budget Balancing Committee. As Dr. Thompson mentioned, the governor's budget calls for Norwood to receive an additional $1.5 million in Chapter 70 funding, that education funding, over what we received last year for FY '20. Of course, the caveat here is that that legislation has been signed, but the funding is still uncertain. Honestly, the funding was somewhat uncertain back in February. And now that we are facing a global pandemic, there's even bigger questions as to what will happen. But there is a requirement that if districts receive more than a million-dollar increase, are required to develop and submit that SOA plan that Dr. Thompson mentioned. So we have decided with the Townwide Budget Balancing Committee and the Finance Commission to recognize that this new state funding is coming with requirements attached. And so therefore, that's a reason that this exceeds the 3.5%. There is an allowance by DESI that the cost of some items in your plan can supplant things that are already in your budget. So about $275,000 of our plan includes things that we were already planning to do in our budget anyway. But there's $300,000 in the FY '21 budget request, which would be new services, which we intend to cover with the Student Opportunities Act money. So I believe that the motion before town meeting will acknowledge that that is a separate piece and is contingent on the state funding. So finally, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about some of the work that the school committee has been doing on the budget process. The school committee has a budget subcommittee made up of Teresa Stewart and myself. And we both attended live presentations and webinars about best practices for school budgets. We studied the practices and reports of other districts and got ideas about how that information is presented, both to stakeholders within the district and within the community. And we conducted a survey of community members to better understand what budget questions need to be answered and how best to communicate that information. And I really want to thank everybody who took the time to respond to that survey. We found it really helpful, and we hope that that will guide us as we go forward and continue to make presentations. And finally, I just want to remind you about a few other things that the school committee has done related to budget. We have approved new financial policies for the town. We've done that, working closely with the Finance Commission and the Board of Selectmen. We have agreed to a regular review of the fees that are charged. I think you know that there have been times where sometimes fees have not changed for years and maybe a decade. And so we, as the three major boards, have all agreed that that's something that we need to look at more frequently. And we signed a memorandum of understanding with the Finance Commission regarding oversight of those out-of-district tuitions. As Dr. Thompson pointed out, we saw, are expecting a significant increase in out-of-district tuitions this year. The Finance Commission recognizes that these are mandates that we have very little control over. And, but we also recognize that we can't just have a blank check to do whatever we want with out-of-district money. So we thought it was very appropriate that we start a process where we have a little bit, we invite the Finance Commission to see a little bit more of the detail of how that money is spent so that they can provide oversight so that the town has confidence that we're spending that money wisely. So that's all that we wanted to talk to you about today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Stay well, stay safe.
Thank you.